One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I called Denise today and I was informed that we would be in the other room. There were no other meetings, that we would be by ourselves tonight. However, apparently the FinCon is meeting at seven o'clock over there, that's why we got sent it over here. So, there we go. Okay, I am going to open the first hearing.
This is all we've gotten so far, right?
I'm sorry?
I haven't gotten any updated things.
That's correct.
No. No, that is it. That's one since April 3rd at the top, right?
Yes. No, February 14th.
Oh, okay, well, there was an updated one, looks like that. It's the same thing.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Except it's got an updated date on it.
It's been terrible, okay.
Yeah, I have the 14th also, that was the other one. That was the one where there was some confusion, a mix-up about getting it posted. And we learn as we go. So, anyway, I will read the announcement of the hearing. Under Mass General Law 30A, Section 20E, the meeting is being recorded. At 6:00 PM, Joan Casey Amaral, hearing regarding a continued hearing on the application request for a variance for a side yard offset requirement relief, as in number seven, Section 7.6.2 side yards. The property is located at 581 A, B, and C Drift Road, and is shown on Assessors Map 53, Lot 12B, and 10J. So, the representatives of the applicant are here. So, why don't we get started? Sorry we had to reschedule this hearing, but that's the way.
She would have been here tonight, she's off to Florida. She had a post-honed-in trip from last week to be at last week's meeting, but that didn't happen.
Couldn't arrange to take us down there and have a hearing there?
Probably a lot nicer than it is outside right now. Good evening, Sean from Septic, getting a hearing, and Attorney John Markey, representing Joan Casey Amaral. She owns the property at 581.
Excuse me, Sean, just one moment, I need to do a housekeeping. I didn't know who might be taking notes, if anybody, if not.
You've done it before, you know.
Are you doing it?
Wait a minute, what are you doing? Can we rotate it? I mean, I'll try to take the notes myself, because I can't.
Don't worry, you can just record this.
Alright, okay, okay. Alright, sorry about that.
So, no problem.
I wanted to have notes for minutes, let me just stick one here for myself.
We were in here previous, I don't know, I don't know, two of the members were here when we came into the law with this particular property. We have since gone to the planning board, divided up, there's three residences, three residents out front, A, B, and C.
Sean, excuse me, when you say you were here, you're referring to the informal meeting we had.
The informal, the informal hearing, right, right.
Quite a while ago.
Quite a while ago.
Not the one on February 14th.
No, 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 that was.
Attorney Markey was here, but, okay.
So, what we're asking for, we created this plan, it's been signed by the planning board, and under Article 7 of the zoning, they're now conforming lots, but what we're looking for relief tonight for is the side yard offset. The requirement, obviously, in town of Westport is 10 feet. And what we have here is two structures that existed prior to zoning. This is a picture of those two structures, two houses, that have 12 feet between them. And it's impossible to meet the 10-foot, in any way, shape, or form, to meet the requirements of the 10-foot side yard. Both these houses were built turn of the century, one was converted, but done at turn of the century. And they're existing as is, this is taken last week, last Thursday, of the house, and this is right where they.
Yeah, I can tell it was the only sunny day.
Yeah. I was purposely doing that on the only sunny day. So, what it is, is you have the two houses, and this picture was taken from this vantage point looking at. And basically, we're looking for side yard offsets. The requirement is 10, what we're doing is keeping one of the driveways on one of the house lots altogether, so it's a little closer to one house than it is the other. So, one house has 7.9 foot side yard offset, the other is 2.4. This driveway, they go to the back, it's gonna be taken out, and they'll have to put a new driveway for this particular house. But because of the age of the house, the configuration, it's just impossible to meet that requirement in the side yard without sort of moving the houses. So, that's what we're looking for, for relief tonight.
What's the reason for breaking the lots up?
Well, they were subdivided in the 70s, but never changed ownership, and the assessors combined them. Now, I don't think that can be done like that, but it has been done. So, we came back and said, you have, by zoning, you have to have single residence, one residence on each lot. And that's what we're doing, and we're in the process of, there's a giant mess out here, Jerry's familiar with it in every way, shape, and form. And we're working towards making everything legal, conforming, and everything like that. And this is one of the first steps of doing this, basically, the generation for this side yard offset. They're in the process of upgrading the septic, the wells, and everything else that goes along with it. But she's going to sell this off, but there's really nothing we can do about the side yard. And that's all we're looking for.
So, why wouldn't you just sell it off as one big lot instead of two?
One big lot? You need to combine these two lots and just put it together?
Then it'd be no side, it'll all be one.
If you put two residents on one lot, this, by zoning, it's non-conforming.
Yes, but this is, that predates zoning. It's always been there.
Right.
So, as a practical.
Leaving it the way it is, you don't need, you don't need a variance?
That is, it's true, I mean, that's, the one option is to take something that's non-conforming, that has only assessable, that has only a well that shares multiple things, and never do an upgrade. This is, these are houses that were built in the late 1800s. This, the woman who is our client, who was here last week, she, she wasn't trying to create something to make more money, you know, take a, a big lot and it subdivided in some way, she inherited this. Either she needs to find somebody who wants to own six houses and rent them all out on one property, or if she wants to live in the house that she lives in and sell off the other houses, the only way to do it is to subdivide pre-existing structures, which we went through the planning board process after first consulting with this board, a year, approximately a year ago, about how to kind of configure things. And this was the logical way to do it, in order to basically allow her. And again, one of the other benefits of this is, her home is way in the back of this, it's a large lot.
Right. Presently, I don't see there, is there another official lot back there?
Yeah, presently, she has to go between these two lots, and so would an ambulance or a fire truck or the bus to get back to her lot. What's going to happen, and one of the reasons, ways we're becoming more compliant is, this is gonna now be her access, and we're cutting off and abandoning this part of the driveway, so that cars won't be running in between these two lots. And again, this is upside down, sorry about that.
You don't show her, is there another actual physical lot with all the houses in the back?
In the back, yes.
So, are they broken up now?
This will show you that, okay, see that lot three that's in the back there?
Okay, but is it, is this all, right now, one big lot?
According to assessors, yes.
Lot one, two, and three, right now, was just one big lot?
And but taxes six residences.
Prior to us going to the planning board, it was one big lot. The planning board has now approved and said, after we spoke with you, after we spoke with them, these are the logical way to solve the first problem. It would be divided into, into three lots. And to, and to do it in this fashion. And the one piece of relief that we, look, there's two changes that are gonna happen in the front. One was, this was being used by a separate person than this house. This was being rented out as a separate unit. That is going to cease with your order, because it's a residence that is sought to be abandoned. So, it will now be an accessory used to this building, but not a separate residence. So, that's an improvement from what used to be non-compliant. Putting in a new septic system that will serve this house, and a new septic system that will serve this house, that's an improvement. Same thing with separate wells, instead of having everything all mixed in, the way that it was done in the 1800s. This is also an improvement to, to get access to the back building by doing this. Not to hide the ball to you, candidly, at some point down the road, there is space back there where, when she's no longer gonna be living in the house, she's, you know, I wanna say she's older, she's older than me, so she's more than 53. At some point, she's gonna wanna give it to her children, and I think they may at that point come in, and it will become more compliant again. They'll subdivide out, they'll have enough space, they'll have to take down any non-compliant structures and then move forward. That's the longer-term plan, just so that we're not hiding the ball from you. But candidly, when we looked at it, this was the logical way for the family to get some money by not, in theory, the other alternative would have been to come in, as some people have done in town, and create condominiums. Keep it all under common ownership, create artificial condominiums, where now you've gotta get six people to work together. Either way, it's a workaround, and we thought this was a more honest, genuine way to say, okay, we're gonna have one standalone lot that's gonna get fully compliant with Title V, with everything else. The problem was, if just this building had been, if they'd been 20 feet between the buildings, we wouldn't have had to come to you. But to try to move a building that was built in the 1800s, doesn't seem like it makes a lot of sense when you look at the, the lot and the, the buildings.
The line on the top, where it says Lot 2, goes all the way straight to the street. But this picture indicates there's another property right here. Why doesn't that show on your plan? See that? Yeah, there's another property right there.
Right, and you see, if you see, it says the name up there.
Yeah, Jennifer Mulvey.
Jennifer Mulvey lives there. And if this lot does a jog out, that's what, that's why you see it.
So, where's the right of way, gonna be straight up?
No, the person who lives here is, that was our client, she's gonna have to come in this way, around him. So, she's not gonna, no longer be coming between those buildings.
So, she'll come south of Lot 1?
Yes.
And, and then, if there was ever gonna be anything done back there by her kids down the road, they'll have to upgrade and make that all fully compliant and subdivision. But for right now, that would be her driveway access. And then she would reconnect back here with the driveway, instead of coming through these buildings.
So, is this the same condition, how, how long ago did she build her house back then?
1972 is what I understand, in that case. And then all of this, you know, again, she didn't build the house, this is her deceased husband, who had built the house back in the early 70s. And that's the back house. These, these were built in the 1890s.
Her husband was Paul Amaral, and he had a family that grew up in that house, way in the back there. And then his first wife deceased, and he remarried, and then now he's deceased, and she's inherited all of this. Now, I will, let me clarify something, you keep saying, Sean, the assessors put these lots together, and you felt wrongly so, but it's not a matter of the law, of the merging of lots? Or, or is it just an administrative thing that the assessors did?
Well, it's the administrative thing, 'cause when they graded the lots in the 70s, there was the 104, you know, 20, 20,000 back in the 70s? That was the zoning back then. When the zoning changed, they merged them again. I should, combining is bad, they merged them because now those lots didn't be zoning, and they were under common ownership. They were never deeded out, these parts were never deeded out as separate ownerships, they kept in the same ownership.
So, it became one big lot?
Yeah.
And then what you said about the planning board, they regrew the concept of this?
No, they approved the plan, they've signed it, and it's been recorded.
Well.
Can I clarify that?
Yes.
Just because they created this, this is, I believe, approval not required, right?
Yes, right.
Approval not required, there's a certain law in the Commonwealth that allows, Dan, if there's a certain frontage, it doesn't, almost doesn't matter the size, I guess there are some limits to the small size. But in this case, the planning board had no choice but to do this. However, I want to be very clear, that does not mean that we have to follow that. They could approve this, and we could say, no way, of these variances here, for whatever, you know, legitimate reason. And, and that's the way it would be. So, I don't know, they'd have, they'd go back to the drawing board, I guess, and do something.
I guess on a practical level, one thing we could do is go back to the drawing board. I don't know if the planning board would undo what they've done. We could destroy one of the buildings.
Destroy one of the buildings.
And then, and then we'd be compliant. We could try to find out what the technology is to lift one of the buildings and move it six feet. And those are potential answers, candidly, but we think that, in light of the age of the buildings, and the fact that we are, as Martin Luther King said, we ain't where we, we should be, but thank God we ain't where we was, or whatever, it's 50th anniversary. This is progress toward getting the entire lot more compliant, in a meaningful way, that satisfies lots of different departments in this building. And so, we're asking for some relief to make a common sense progress, I guess.
And then, you know, and the problem with this, obviously, is, once we, if we agree to this, that's the, that's the way it is forever and a day afterwards. It becomes a permanent, whoever takes the, you know, you can then sell each of these lots individually.
And that is, that's the intention. And, and again, if she wanted to own a huge lot with these multiple buildings, she could do that. Or, and then she's gotta find tenants that are right there, I mean, personally, from a tax perspective and the town's perspective, I'd prefer to see a solid homeowner who owns a significant 1880 former barn that was converted 100 years ago, rather than one person trying to find good tenants in multiple lots on it, that's one thing. And secondly, there would be no requirement of her to upgrade septic, to upgrade all those other things, which we want, which I think are good for everybody as well. But I, I appreciate your concern. The one thing that's reality is, by doing this approval now, in essence, these old buildings are being grandfathered, if you will. But if they ever wanna put on an addition, if these people wanna put on a garage, they're gonna have to come back to you, because they now have a non-conforming use, that you're saying, it's okay as it was built in 1890. But if you're gonna change it substantially, you've gotta come back and get further zoning relief, because you now have a non-conforming structure that you're modifying. So, in a sense, you're not, you're endorsing what exists, you're not giving them the ability to expand something that, that. When you drive by, if we were successful today, and if nothing changes, this is what people are gonna see in town, this is what it's gonna look in town, except, hopefully, a year from now, a young family lives here that buys it, and a young family lives here that buys it.
Leave that picture up there for a second. The way I understand this, is the property line is gonna be like right here.
About three feet off the tops, yes.
How's this person get in there?
Well, they're gonna, they're gonna put in.
There's no, their driveway is owned by this person.
There's gonna be a separate driveway that's created, instead of, instead of everybody sharing the same driveway, there'd be a separate driveway that's gonna have to be built.
Separate driveway coming into this, they do a lot.
Because you can see they put, they've cut out the driveway so that this driveway just services this house.
Rather than split the driveway, then you have a whole different, a bunch of different issues. Keeping the driveway on one lot, and then they would have to create a new driveway for that lot.
Where, where is it? There is going to be a new driveway constructed, is that what you're saying?
I would imagine.
And where is that gonna be?
I was coming off the Drift Road.
Okay, so it's on the south lot?
He said he's imagining that's where.
And most of this driveway is on the north lot already, so we moved the property line just off the pavement, so that this would be owned entirely by that particular house, and then that wouldn't have to.
So, you don't yet know where, in your concept here, where that driveway will be to service the south house?
Not at this time, there is any plans or any concept on that.
And there would be three driveways, one for each lot?
Yes. We could go a common driveway, we could ask the planning board to come in with a common driveway. They have a new requirement, you have to get a special permit for that, that can service the three lots. And you could do a driveway off this driveway, which I think would be preferable, traffic-wise and safety-wise. But that's another special permit.
Is there enough room between the, the lower property line and Lot 1 to fit a driveway?
Yeah, you've got about 100 feet.
No, no, no.
No, this is out of this, yeah. What's the space between here and the stone wall?
Oh, it's 40 feet.
Okay.
That's 40 feet, that, that space?
Yeah, that width is 40 feet.
So, you have a 10-foot wide or 12-foot wide?
You'd have to go 20 feet.
Okay, so I wanna go back to what you just said a minute ago. Did you say it would be best to put the driveway serving the south house off of the same driveway that's gonna serve the lot?
Well, common drives, just as a matter of principle, common driving, like subdivision roads, to have less curb cuts, we can't make anybody do it, 'cause there's a special permit, and we can't speak to the planning board to say they may have to do a special permit.
Okay, because for safety purposes, I think it'd be better to come off of that lower driveway. It's not a big deal there, 'cause you're, it's not a high-traffic situation, but.
It is highly visible in each direction.
Yeah, right, that's what I'm saying, it's not, not that big a deal, there is a curve there, but, but I think you're far enough away from the curve that you, you could do it. But I guess I'm concerned about. What's to stop the person later on from just doing, there is gonna be a new driveway built to the back, right?
Yes.
Yeah, right there, okay. So, who and when is it gonna be determined where the driveway is to serve that house?
I would imagine at the time where my client or purchase and sales.
Of sale?
Yeah, if somebody would say, I gotta get to this house, how do I do it?
Yeah, well, that's what I'm thinking, so I think we oughta be looking at how you're gonna get to that house before they do it.
The two things that benefit it is there, there's no access on this side of the house, so it's not like the front door is facing this way. The front door would be facing the street, and there is a door around the back of this little L, that you could do that also. And it would be up, I would think, be up to the buyer, that someone would have to install it or.
And you've got a stone wall that goes all the way down to.
You know, this front stone wall, or you have the side stone wall?
I mean, it's a stone wall that goes down, up to about the point where you think you're gonna put a driveway in. Well, you need to take, you have to take some.
Right, this, this kinda meets a point, basically, in perspective, that it gets, this wall gets shorter.
Shorter, shorter.
Because there's less grade up to the house than there is on this side, 'cause there's a little rise here. So, you're showing it as a stone wall here with no opening, and it is a stone wall with no opening, but it could be done, I mean, it's done all the time, obviously.
Sure.
I wanna indicate that, for the, for the record, that there, there are a number of legal questions regarding this property for a long, long time. I have a sheet here, it might be in the other file, but I'm sure we're all aware of it, that there is a report that shows that all of these little buildings were all, not the large one where they live in the back, and not these, the front ones, but there, there's no building permits on record for any of these. The, the uses are, have gone from sheds to residential structures illegally, okay? Because, as Sean said, the law said, our bylaw says that you can't have more than one residential, separate structure. Slightly changed as of a couple of years ago, where they now allow a detached accessory apartment, in-law apartment. However, even that has to have its own special permitting. So, in effect, these were all illegally occupied all these years, and no one's ever done anything about it. And I don't really feel that we should be starting to do too much about it now. I guess legally we could, if we really wanted to open a can of worms, but that's my opinion, put it that way. But, right now, we still have two residential structures on that south lot, am I correct?
This one, on this one, this one's gonna be abandoned.
Going to be.
Yes. You can, you can make it part of the condition, it was, it's fully expected to be.
Well, I'll give you my opinion on it, okay? Given the history of what I just told you, I personally would not wanna act on this until it was very clear to me with my own eyes, that that.
So, if anyone sees it, it's a number.
Is an empty shed, or destroyed, okay? Because if we pass it with conditions, it's like the, the rest of it, it never gets enforced. And therefore, it just goes on, and they, now you've got a two-family there. Now, maybe the folks buying it might be able to make that into a detached.
They could come to you and get a permit for a detached.
Special permit for detached in-law, or something like that. But, but that's not the intention right now, that.
But the intention, the intention is to divide it for now, to say, we're not promising to any buyer that you're gonna be able to use that as a residence. If they come in and they say, hey, I, I have a young family, I want this from my parents, then they've gotta come in, 'cause you're gonna put in an order that says it cannot be used for residential purposes. But I think that would selfishly, from my client, give her some options as to who the buyers might be, if they had that, if they saw it as valuable, they could come in and see you. Rather than saying, take the wrecking ball to it, and then they, somebody wants to do it, and they come and rebuild something that's very similar.
Well, I, I think you're gonna understand why I'm a little bit fuzzy about, about what's going on there.
Oh, no, yeah, you know, and we've had Ralph out there doing his inspection and everything, and, you know, we're not trying to hit anybody.
Is anyone currently living in that little small house?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, have you been out there to see that?
Yeah, we, we met there about six months ago, we met out there, and there's, there's multiple buildings on that property.
Yeah.
And the one in question, I mean, it could be, we possibly could put a stipulation that it, it have something removed, so I don't deem it as one.
So, that what?
Take, they'll take a permit out to remove, like the kitchen, remove.
Oh, oh, actually, not the building.
Not the building, but remove a portion of it, so that I don't deem it as one. It's an accessory structure for the main block.
We could leave the structure there and just.
Just leave the structure there, and in the future, if they wanna come back and say, well, we wanna convert that back to a.
They'd have to turn it to a wood shop or something.
Somebody, somebody is living in 581 A, A and B?
I think there was, I'm not sure.
In the back, I know there's no one in the front, one in the back, two, there've been people in and out.
Oh, A, A and B are the two that are.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, I think there's one in A, I'm not sure if there's still some in B.
But they're both livable?
Oh, yeah.
Livable houses.
Oh, they're significant, yeah, I mean, they're significant structures, they're two-story, you know, this one, I mean, they're.
Now, which one was the barn originally, that one, right? And then it was the old house, that was way back in the 1800s or whatever.
Yeah, that's an old house.
But the one that you see on the far left, that almost looks like an L off of the, the large one on the left, that's the cottage one, I believe, we're talking.
No, that's actually.
Is that an L off that?
Yeah, there is an L on that.
I thought it's just the angle of.
You can, you can almost see it, but you can't really see it.
Okay.
That's the best I can, it, it's just behind that.
It's behind that one, okay. By the way, I'll also mention that this, this is the most liberal picture of the property that, in terms of the tightness of that driveway. If you stand in front of that property, it's like, like this, it's like a little measure, this way and this way, about the width of a car.
I don't, I don't have a big truck, but I get a little nervous, 'cause I have wide windows showing between the two houses.
But this way here, it kinda looks like it's more spacious, but it's really tightly, you know.
May I ask a question? So, the converting of the other little buildings illegally into residences, or was that done by the Amaral family?
I would have to say yes, because according to all the assessors' records, there were sheds, 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 and all of a sudden, it's, it's a, it's a house. And, and they were all in the, well, probably from the 70s, at least the 70s or 80s forward. This way.
I think that just, and as far as, just, in 1972, the major building that she lives in the back, a building permit was issued. So, actually, I think that, you know, Jerry's right, that technically, that probably shouldn't have been issued. But they came into Town Hall, and they said, we wanna build a third house on this property, and they were granted a building permit, and they proceeded, and I believe, under the zoning laws, if it exists for 10 years, and you acted in good faith and you had a building permit, the town can't really make you tear that structure down. The other two small ones, I think, the same Mr. Amaral, before he married our client, before, obviously, he passed, he converted those smaller ones. But we don't know if it was 73, if it was 81, if it was, so we just don't know. And again, I think that the longer-term thought is that the back person would be more valuable as keeping the existing house and creating a building lot back there, and getting rid of two small little cottages and having one nice house. And down the road, I think she has two sons, she'd like to see that happen when she's no longer there. But she doesn't have the resources to do that kind of a project now. And so, that's kinda where it's at, and that's, as far as I know, that's how we got to where we are.
Could you just repeat that for a moment? You have one house on the third lot, and she wants to subdivide that one for, no?
Long time down the road, at some point, she may want to do that, but if she does that, now she's gonna have a non-conforming lot. And it, the value in her existing house is gonna just stay there as a lot. And if she wants to do something on the other lot, she has to do something with these two small buildings. That's what would ultimately happen, but she's not looking.
More coming for you guys again.
So, there's six buildings on the property.
And they're taxed, and six residences for the last number of years.
I don't, I don't have an idea.
I have, I have those records here, if we really wanted to look into.
This is what we're talking about.
I understand that, I was just wondering.
For 30 years, it's meant to be six residences.
The split back between two people.
Now, do you have any plan in front of us that shows the entire parcel, where the other buildings are located?
No, we had a plan that, again, that was signed by the planning board, that does do that, but not, you mean, you're meaning parts.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking, okay, because I wanna be clear, we're talking about a house way in the back, but am I correct that there's also two other residences on this?
You can see it on the special.
Okay, so there's three residences on that back lot right now.
Well, it's three buildings anyway.
Now, I wanna go back to what Attorney Markey just mentioned. He said that after 10 years, after 10 years, the town can't go in and, you know, even though you built it without a building permit.
No, no, I didn't say that. If you build with a building permit, in good faith, so I'm saying the 1972 house. No, I'm not saying ones that you didn't, I don't wanna misspeak.
What, what, maybe I'm not being clear. From what I understand, it's my, my understanding of it, is that if you build with a permit, Is that if you build with a permit, uh, the town has seven years to, uh. Do something about it if it's not right. If you do it without a permit, I believe it's ten. However, what I've led to believe is that that is only for the structure, not the use. So therefore, uh, right now, if this town wanted to, they, in my opinion, they could go and say. Those are the.
You can't use that for.
You, you can use it for shed, you can use it for a workshop, but you can't use it for, for a thing, uh, for a residence, okay? I don't think that's what we're here for, and I don't think that's why I said, because I don't wanna open a Pandora's box of that kinda stuff, but I believe it could be done. So I don't wanna mislead you to think that, you know, it, it's ten years and therefore we can't do anything about it, because I think we could, uh, not we, but. He could do something about that as a zoning enforcement officer, but that's not what we're here for. Uh, we're, we're looking right now at this, uh, and, uh, I don't know, maybe as a result of opening this hearing. Uh, maybe the zoning enforcement officer would do something about those, uh, excess ones in the back, I don't know that. Uh, but, uh, I just wanna be clear that it's not like we can't do anything about this, because it's happened, you know, it's been there for so long. Am I wrong about that?
Well, I, I think, you know, I think, I think some, largely what you said is right. I think though, if, if you then went into somebody and said. The major house that they built with a building permit in nineteen seventy-two, we're gonna take away your right to live there, I think you might have a problem with that. With the smaller ones, I think you might.
I'm talking about smaller.
Correct, yeah, I, I understand.
I'm talking about, oh, not that, not, not the lodge house in the back, no.
But I, I think.
Actually, I think, and I may be wrong about this, uh, I think that those little ones were converted after the big one was in the back. But I may be wrong about that.
I don't have any records either way, just like the town does.
Anyway, but that's probably immaterial, uh, uh, unless somebody wants to pursue it. I think what we wanna look at here now is, is this a reasonable plan? Uh, and does it, does it solve anything?
I have a question also, I'm a little confused with the different lines here, we've got, we've got the red lines, which I suppose is what. She's gonna try to sell us two different lots, and then we have a white line that goes like this, and. So, what does this mean? I'm sorry, what?
That, that was a, a subdivision plan that was done in the seventies, and they created a roadway, and that little, what is that little curve you see there is a cul-de-sac? It would've been a cul-de-sac here.
Uh-huh.
But because nothing was ever acted on, or nothing was ever done, it went away, and it's just been carried over by the assessors as this is what is out there.
Okay, so that doesn't really mean anything.
Doesn't mean anything, it was, it was a historical thing created.
That's not like another lot?
No, 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 it's not, no, no.
Now, I'll also mention to the board, uh, we have one brand new board member tonight.
Hello?
That, uh, if you so chose that, uh, if it's not clear, because sometimes you're looking at pieces of paper and even the photographs. Uh, you can't quite get the context of things, uh, that we can always, uh, ask for and vote on whether we do an onsite. Uh, uh, viewing of the property, and, uh, if you chose to do that, you could do that. Uh, we typically would do that on a Saturday morning, but you can do it anytime we chose to do it, so I'm just letting you all know that, 'cause. Uh, a lot of times we forget that that's possible.
Jerry was right on the perspective of this particular photograph, it looks like there's a lot more space between the houses than actually just.
Yeah, when you actually get things on, it's.
Yeah, like I said, if I drive my truck through there, it's a little hairy. They've gotten an ambulance through there, they got him out of there with an ambulance, so I don't know how, but.
Yeah.
I've driven there, I mean, I've seen it from the road, I've tried to look.
Yeah, 'cause it's like right across from the apple.
Yeah, right across from Oka Troop.
So, uh, now, I, I.
But each of these now, lots now are, are about a half an acre.
No more than half an acre, yeah.
Just a bit over a half an acre.
What's it got, what kind of?
But now, I'm sorry.
I just wonder, what sort of foreseeable conundrums, difficulties would. Selling these two lots separately and having these houses like that, other than what we've talked about, like if they wanna put a garage on. What down the line could you see as a problem for?
I, I don't know.
The owners of.
Sean, you wanna?
As far as problems, as far as getting a building permit, or?
Yeah, just like, you know, it's, the living, you know, that close, I mean, they're, they'll have separate systems.
If you picture it, because they're all staggered, they're not like, you know, if they were two feet apart, you could, you know, reach across and get a coffee to your neighbor. Uh, it's not much different than what you see at Westport Point, or even the head, or someplace where the houses are really close together, and it's just. The way it is now, you know, we're used to, now we have sixty thousand square foot zoning, ten-foot offsets, so the minimum you could ever have two houses would be twenty feet, which. That seems close to a lot of people, but because you have sixty thousand required, it, it makes for, you know, broader area, uh, basically. And you don't get that closeness. These houses, not unlike Westport Point, are built close together. I mean, there isn't much, you know, to say, other than, you know, it's, it's not. Back in eighteen nineties, they didn't worry about having three hundred feet between them and their neighbor, or that kinda stuff.
How about the issue of, as she was mentioning, if they wanted to build a, a garage behind it? Now, there's no issues of wetland on this property.
No, there was all, there's no.
So we're good with that.
Yeah, they, well, like we had, we've come to you in the past with, uh, Petty Heights and various other places, you have a non, quote-unquote. Existing non-conforming lot that needs this be, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera? And that would be your decision, if they, you know, if they were gonna put a, you know, five thousand square foot addition on there, you would have to determine if that's appropriate.
Because it's a non-conforming lot, anytime they wanna make a change, people would have to come for you. For a special permit to expand it on. Because it doesn't meet the frontage, and it doesn't meet the lot size.
Yeah.
The lot size.
Right, correct.
So they would have to come back to us for any reason, not, not that they couldn't meet, uh, dimensional side lot lines or anything. That was, if they wanna do anything in a way of an addition to that, they'd have to come back to us?
Yeah, it, yes, much like, you know, the permission to be granting for all the cottages that have been, been built or not down, and various other things, yeah.
I thought that, well, yeah, that's right, because it would be an expansion of a footprint.
Right, correction.
Now, they could've actually made the lots big enough to conform to lot size, but they could, could never have gotten the frontage.
Right.
There's a lot of room back there, they could've given them more land.
And I think, and that was part of when we did come here, and we did come to the planning board both informally, and they looked at it, and they said. You know, why are you gonna create, uh, you know, when we originally tried to do it to make it big enough, this was gonna have a big L and go out that way. Then this had to go out with a big L that way, like, these people will never use this space, why? Create something that's artificial when you're, if you were creating it tabularizing, you'd, you know, you'd, you'd do it that, you'd create those size lots. But this doesn't make sense.
Well, no matter how you did it, you still couldn't get away with the front.
No, no, and, and it's just, and there's nothing you can do, if the variance proceeding with the side yard, you know, short of, and not what suggested, actually, by one of the planning board members. Can you move the house? And it's like, that's kinda difficult to do, uh, you know, it's not like just, okay, we can slide it over, you know, or anything like that. It's, they're set in stone foundations, they're not cones.
Does that existing foundation?
If you houses move.
Give them any rights going forward?
No, not that I'm aware of, I don't think they could get a building permit just because they have a foundation. No, yeah, I think it was a chicken house, I don't know, I'm theorizing to the, the shape and the skin, and it's just sitting there like that.
It's a, it's a full foundation?
No, it's ground level.
Okay, uh, so Ralph, if they came to you, uh, Ralph, if they came to you for a building permit to, to make a workshop back there. Uh, would that be allowed?
Be a workshop for the, for the, it'd be a secondary structure, it would be, it would be allowed.
It would.
Well, but it's probably.
But I'm talking about the side, the setback to the.
It would be, it would be, it, it would be, I have it six feet off the, the rear setback, and then have it ten feet off the side yard setback, at the way it sits.
So that would be allowed, right? So the answer to that question was yes, they could build a structure on that foundation. But I don't, I don't really think that would be detrimental to anybody.
It would depend on the use, obviously, if it's.
It just depends what they come forward with.
If I'm not for house, not, not for residential property.
Right, and they could put a three-story structure there or something like that.
Right, okay, so, uh.
I have a question, I am new to the zoning board tonight, it's my first night, and I see what the pros would be for your, um, your client. Uh, what would the cons be to the town in us granting this variance, because I, I am not seeing any. Is precedence a problem?
No.
No, we don't worry about precedent.
No, no issues about precedent.
Okay.
I, I will sort of go, uh, with, um, what Attorney Maki said earlier. I think it's likely that, uh, it would be, uh, positive for the town in the sense of, uh. Of, of tax revenue, I'm guessing that, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Because I would think that the assessors would assess both of those lots for more total than they are now as part of one big.
Okay.
Okay, I don't see any detriment that I can picture, uh, on that, I mean, you got a, not, possibly another curve, but. I don't know, and as far as the closeness of, now, you said three feet, right, is, uh, off of that house?
Two point nine, two point four, uh, technically.
Two and a half feet?
Yeah, two and a half feet.
Okay, 'cause one of the things I'm always concerned about, uh, is, uh, getting a structure too close to the line. Where you can't maintain the house.
Right.
If, if you got two neighbors, it don't get along.
Right.
And, uh, and, and you wanna do something inside your house. Yeah, you can't, you can't, yeah, you can't even put a ladder up properly, so that would be my only concern there.
And the driveway is owned by, would be owned by Lot Two.
Yeah, that's right.
That is correct.
We, we're running right along the driveway.
For that, um, let me just ask a question on that. Would it be feasible? I know people on Lot Two might not like it as well, but would it be feasible to put a, uh, an easement? That would allow the people from Lot One, uh, as needed to maintain their house. To, uh, have an easement so that we could not have that issue, 'cause that's always an issue with me.
And it, it, yeah, I don't see a problem.
Yeah, no, I don't see a problem. I've created those after the fact where problems have happened, but I've never, I, I mean, I haven't prospectively, and. But logically speaking, it's always good to make sure it goes both ways, so maybe you would give an easement to Lot Two, so they could maintain their driveway. An easement to Lot One, so they could maintain their house, for five feet either way or something.
We did one not long ago, where it was a cooperative thing, uh, one, one person needed it, the other person. Could benefit also from it, and they worked it out with their attorney, and, and before we allowed it to go into effect. We s- we had the, uh, uh, oh, we called it, there was a name we called that, but anyway. We had the reciprocal, reciprocal easement, uh, and, uh, it was recorded, and I put it on. And attached it to our decision, uh, that was recorded in the registry of deeds, so. So, I, I, that may be something you wanna consider as a, as a condition as well.
The only issue we haven't talked about, this is a variance, it means you need a hardship. What's the hardship?
I think the, the hardship from my perspective on it is that you have two houses that were built this close in the eighteen hundreds. That you've inherited as a single lot, and to lift one up or to destroy a, a house would be, would be a hardship, and it's unique.
Well, no, you, you, you're saying that's a financial hardship, isn't it?
No, I think, I, I think that a, something that is unique to the lot and not typical of any of the lots around it. And the hardship that is financial, for example, you would use an example of, hey, if all the other lots can build in the middle of the lot. The classic example, I taught at the law school, where municipal law was, you have somebody who has a granite outcropping in the middle of their lot. And therefore, you say, can I build closer to the sideline? We all agree that that's correct, but realistically, if you went in with blaster.
Blasters, you did.
You could do it, I mean, it, it, with enough money, any problem is solvable, so I think that the hardship in, in this case is man-made. But in a sense, it's a hardship that was man-made over a hundred years ago that she inherited, and unlike a self, a self-created hardship where. You're choosing to try to have a little side lot that you keep, and then you take it out of your back pocket seven years later or fifteen years later. This is something that has existed forever.
Now, that's with the assumption that there were two houses there, but there really weren't two houses, there was a house on a barn, which is why they. Got that, but I'll buy that, I can.
Yes, no, it was created before the zoning, the barn was created to a house.
'Cause if I recall, there wasn't even, if I recall on the record, I do not think that there was even a record of a building per- permit. Uh, to, to make the barn into a house either, uh, into a residential structure. Because what I read that was, uh, from the planning board was that there were no records of any permits. Uh, there was one reference in an assessor's note some years later. That said that, uh, one structure there had a building permit, uh, but no one could find it, so. That was just an assessment.
I didn't find the building permit even for the newer house in the back, so, I mean, and typically, I hate to say this, before the seventies. You'd have to find a building permit on just about anything. That was done.
And there wasn't a whole lot of enforcement.
Right, right.
So anyway, the, the bottom line here is, uh, what, what you think of, uh, of this as a, an idea. Uh, whether you need to get more information, or, uh, whether, uh. You wanted to do an onsite, or whether you think you, you can do it based on what's here. Uh, I don't think there's a whole lot of, uh, unless you do something drastically different, uh, with lot sizes and all, I don't see where there's. Much in a practical way where you can do any more than what they've done, as far as getting that, uh, driveway through. Uh, you know, that, that one, and then putting a new driveway for the, for the south, uh, building. So you need to consider whether you, uh, wanna make, um, if you were to approve this. Whether you would, uh, want to make a condition that they have to put in a new driveway to that south house. Uh, that that driveway has to be a certain distance from the other driveway, so that they're not putting them side by side, and making a double driveway. Uh, you have to consider whether you want that, uh, that other rental house that's. Off of, uh, the house on Lot Two to, uh, be abandoned, and, uh. And, and if so, myself, I, I would at least wanna see the, uh. Uh, what makes it a residence, uh, removed, and that would be basically the kitchen sink, right?
Three elements make a, make it a dwelling, uh, preparation, air, preparation of food, bathing, and sleeping. That's the three elements, basically, by the.
But you have to have all three.
Have to have all three, so if one of them's gone, it's not at all.
Take one of them out, so you take the kitchen sink or the kitchen.
Take the kitchen out, I, when I've asked for kitchens to be removed, I've asked anything that can be removed.
Right.
The whole kitchen, the whole semin, type and all.
I like that better, uh, but anyway, so those are the kinds of things that you need to consider, uh, and, uh. And then you'll have to deal with the real lots at some other time.
Now, um, one septic to these, the, uh, I s- there is a septic that does, that supplies both?
Yes, right now, there's, right here, in this area.
And well, there's one well that's placed up.
They, they're currently being configured, septic designed and done, but each has its own separate well and septic.
And I mean, that's something, though, that we, we tend not to do because.
We, we, we don't have jurisdiction. That's correct, however, we could.
We could at least put a node in there.
Absolutely, you can make a condition.
Right.
That, uh, the house on Lot Two will need to have, uh, a, uh, septic and, and well separately. As per border health requirements, and then, if border health comes in, so you don't need it, well, that's not our business.
Yes. It seems to me we're kinda stuck either way, because you can have two, two different families living there now. It's just a matter of whether two different families are living there on two different pieces of property, right?
Well, yeah, except that they're all rental, all owned by the lady in the back.
Right, well, I mean, but I'm, but, you know, from a, from a logistic standpoint, there's two different families.
Right.
Living in those two different houses.
Right, nothing's gonna change.
Whether they're on one lot or two lots, by making it two lots, then we can at least force them to have the well and the septic. And the driveway that's appropriate, and, uh.
Absolutely, and, uh.
And, you know, and the, and the, the, the minus is, one of them is awfully damn close to.
Well, and that's where you, that's, if you're buying it, the, you're gonna buy that knowing that, you're not walking into it, it's not like you're hiding something. But at least you have landscape between the two.
Well, you can't, you can't put shrubs in there, this shrub would take a whole, you can put a fence there, isn't it?
People want tree.
But you're right, there are a lot of places in the, in, you know, in Westport that, that live that.
Well, it's a house at the head, the houses, I don't know, the shingle, the two houses that are more, put half apart.
Yeah, like you said, you can pass tea to the next person.
Okay, they're brand new, or they're in Lincoln Park.
Yes.
They can't connect these two and make a duplex, can they?
Seriously.
No, that's a good question.
Why not?
Uh, uh, well, because they don't have sufficient frontage or area to put a duplex.
Seven feet.
Uh, no, no, to put a duplex by permit, you have to have, uh, a hundred, a hundred and eighty.
You can get two hundred and eighty. Two hundred feet of frontage is indeed, there's no way we can ever work with frontage.
Two hundred, two hundred foot of frontage and eighty thousand square feet and for every twenty thousand, for every additional unit, another twenty thousand, another probably fifty feet of frontage. So they couldn't legally do that without coming before this board.
Yeah, we'd be back.
Now, when I say that, uh they can come before this board, as I said much earlier in the evening, uh and and seek a permit for an accessory apartment under the so-called in-law.
It was like seven hundred fifty.
Which is fairly new, by the way, uh so you know, uh that's fairly new, only probably three years ago. However, even prior to that, they could have connected, what you just said, they could have connected those two buildings with a even a fence. They've allowed even a fence to do, which I think is ridiculous, but anyway, uh it was considered a structure. They put the two buildings together and were allowed to make that second one into a an in-law apartment. But now that's not even an issue because we allow detached in-law apartments. Uh what's the square footage of that building roughly, the little one?
Oh, the uh.
Yeah, that little one.
I think it's six hundred and eighty.
Okay, so that.
That could be a.
Yeah, so that yeah, that falls under because the detached unit has to be below a certain. So is it a thousand square feet or seven hundred?
Seven fifty, for detached, uh five hundred minimum.
No.
They say five hundred, seven hundred fifty.
So the answer is yes, they could come back to us, but for for a different reason, it would have to be in under the in-law or the accessory apartment, detached accessory apartment. And I think we would need to make sure we think about a reciprocal easement that we were talking about earlier, so that people could maintain the house.
Does anybody think they need to do it? I I've driven, I I've I've parked in front of this a couple of times to look at it.
I have also.
Okay.
It's what you said, we don't really need it.
I don't I don't need to.
I mean, I see we're we're pretty much know what what it is, it's not hidden down the lane.
It's right on the road.
So do you have any other thoughts or questions about any of this? Anyone that you folks wanna add? Are you satisfied with the hardship explanation or would you get a little more?
Like we've always said, hardship is is awfully difficult. The only hardship here you can say is this was built and off and down a long time ago when there's, you know. Does that have any historical value?
Probably on the list. Probably on, I don't know.
Did you tear it down?
You could tear it down.
You have to come in for a permit.
To tear it down, you'd have to go before the what the.
Restore a commission.
If you want it toned down.
Does that apply to the inside as well as the outside?
Not the outside, it's the structure itself. They want to bring the accessory structure down and if that's on my list and a restore a restore a buildings, they couldn't be toned down for the historic commission six. I can't, I can't issue a permit for this, so probably just to tear it down.
I think you work on the inside.
They could work on the inside and it and it's not in the district, so the purview of what it looks like wouldn't matter.
Just having heard what everybody said and the suggestions that Jerry made, I think the idea of a cross easement requirement or reciprocal easement requirement, I think is something that makes sense in our clients we deal with and I could address. So if you made that a requirement, I don't think we would have an objection. And I think as far as making it clear that there is no, that the the accessory structure is not to be used as a residence and the kitchen be removed at this time, I think we could live with. As far as the exact location of the driveway, just because I don't know if you're gonna want a special permit, I'd like to leave that as flexibility cuz there's gonna, one has to be built because otherwise you can't get to the house. But I I'd rather figure that out once we talk to the planning board rather than putting a specific best way to do it.
Okay, my my last statement was not related to exactly where to put the driveway. It was a minimum distance from the other driveway, uh would be my thought.
Not making it a double wide.
So that they're not like the one being like killing. I mean, aesthetically alone, you know, but also safety lines. Anything else?
I thought the idea of having the driveway go in and use one driveway for two would have been good, but you know.
It makes a lot of sense, but it's tough to get people to re-undo things to begin with, but.
Would that be uh an objection to uh?
Well, the problem is you never know whether it's a common driveway, you have to get a special.
We have to go to the planning board to get that permission.
There's no guarantee that that's gonna happen, so what's the problem?
Just so you're just two houses, I thought common driveway would be more than.
Two houses. Anything that's basically a common driveway?
Well, my own thought is that if we made it so that the uh it would have to be X number of feet, we could we could figure that out here in a minute. At least separated from the other driveway, that that maybe would give them at least maybe a little more incentive to put it around the corner uh off of the uh off the main driveway. Now, when is this other driveway gonna be built, the one to the back?
She wants to do it as soon as everything's all set with these two.
Because I think that's another thing we ought to.
Well, that's one of the things I wrote down is that, you know, this is all contingent upon another driveway.
Being constructed.
All the way to the back because then I can be able to use the ones on lot one and two.
Right, you know, and and I I think that our decision would be contingent upon making that. In other words, until they do that, this is invalid, you know, it's ineffective. You don't see a practical issue with that, do you?
No, no, I think I think if you said the logical thing to do is to say that gives you control rather than saying exactly how this has to be built, which is a plan board, so just say, this has to be abandoned. Because that will force them to do that and if you put that in your decision before, it may not happen this week, but before anybody will pay money or a bank will loan money, they'll make sure that that condition has been satisfied.
Right.
So if you wanted to add that as a condition, that would be a way to go.
I don't wanna just deal with a bank or loan money cuz I wanna make sure that it happens and somebody comes in with a cash.
Right, but I don't think any any good lawyer is gonna want somebody to buy a house that is subject to a condition that hasn't been satisfied. Cause you you're buying a lot of yourself.
Anyway, but I I now uh you're not saying that uh we shouldn't address the fact that there is going to be a driveway on that south south boundary, right? You you still wanna say where?
I think there's, I think there are two ways to make you use a driveway here. One is to say this driveway must be abandoned.
Must be abandoned.
If you do that, that has the same effect as saying either you're coming in by helicopter or you're building another driveway. So that you can do it either way, you can either say you affirmatively must build or you'll say you must abandon. And I think from your perspective or from his enforcement perspective, it might be easier to say you must abandon cuz that's you can stop somebody from doing something easier than you can get somebody to do something. At least that's what worked with my kids.
Well, okay, now, when you say abandoned, okay, you're gonna look concerned about that because if they wanted to save money and they don't wanna put that driveway all the way back there and what it's gonna cost, so they uh make a deal with the the people in lot two say, well, we'll knock twenty thousand dollars off your the price of this house if you allow us an easement to use this driveway.
I believe in.
How's that gonna, how how is that?
I believe, I'm the two heart and and the whole thing, since we've created this lot and this is gonna, that that they would have to go get a special permit for the uh.
Oh, I see, you're you're back to common driveway, but I don't want that to even be a potential. So uh, well, maybe we say both things. Abandon the back, in other words, what what you're saying is that they they would abandon that, but what would stop them from getting an easement?
Well, I think I here's here's what I think that you're doing, we're dealing with lots one and two. Once you get out here, you're now putting conditions that are outside of the lots that are technically in front of you. I think if you say to them, you have to abandon any access to the rear on your property, Mr. Lot, on on your property, Miss Lot two. You can control these people who are getting a decision.
Let me ask you a question, uh if if we as part of that language said abandon and with no and with no easements allowed?
Well, you you want easements on the other side.
No, no, I don't mean that, but I'm talking with no.
I understand what you're talking.
Through the middle.
If you wanna say no common drive, basically it's even, no common drives, then I think you would cover it. Because that's in your zoning, the common drive is part of the zone.
But then that might, um if if they did wanna common drive to lot.
Yeah, you're right on that.
Which might be a good idea, you know?
I think it is, but.
So, yeah, but I mean it.
I would say, I think you could easily easily say maybe, I apologize, no access to lot three between buildings.
Right.
Yeah.
And then you, I think you're fine.
That's what I'm saying, something like that.
Cause if you put the word easement in, then it might be, people might perceive, well, you can't get any easements, you just don't want it to be.
But you folks know right now that they absolutely will be building that driveway on the south.
Oh, yeah, she's been bugging me for six months now.
All right. So uh we noted down all of the concerns that we have.
So that I figured we would be right.
Yeah.
We'd be right.
That's right, I just don't wanna forget any of that.
Yeah, no, I got, yeah.
And uh there's there's no issues of buffering or landscaping or any of that stuff here because it is what it is and and it's not a lot of room, like you said, you put maybe a tree there or something, but that's not it.
Now, you could do it for, I'm sure you put it on trowels or something there, just a screen.
Now, it's very likely that one of those owners may choose, especially the one on lot two, may wanna choose to put a fence in. And that's their business, you know, they have to be very careful where they put it though.
Yeah, cuz that kind of destroyed the purpose of having an easement that you may maintain.
Now, with that um with that area, how how much width is between the house on lot two and the uh the boundary, the new boundary you established?
The south line, the south line. The south line you're talking about?
Yeah, right there, right, right where you're thinking, right there.
It's seven point nine feet.
So you couldn't really get a car in there after.
Well, you wouldn't have to cuz it kinda goes already on the side, so there wouldn't be any reason to.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, they couldn't, really wouldn't have any uh ability or need to go on the south side, okay. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, what's your question?
I make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, uh move the second to close the hearing?
Sure.
Okay, and what that means is we close the hearing, uh we don't take any more input. If we need to ask a question for clarification from the building inspector or somebody like that, we could do that, but we don't take any new information. But the general public or the applicants and their representatives remain if they choose to and and we discuss it and then we we go on to make a decision, okay? So all right, all in favor of closing the hearing?
All right. There was one thing, did any of the others comment?
Uh I I received nothing, and that's a good point, and I didn't ask for any because I don't see it here, so. But no, that is a very good point, so there is, uh we can note that there's no other objection uh or or any interference, okay? Okay, so again, all in favor of closing the hearing?
All right.
All opposed, extensions, okay. All right, so the hearing's closed and now we discuss it and I'll be looking for a motion to uh do what you wanna do.
Well, I'll start off, I guess, uh originally I would look at this, I don't like this idea at all, but on the other hand, I don't see a lot of alternatives. I I hate making more lots that are non-conforming because they become non-conforming forever.
That's right, yeah.
Now, in this case, we already have two families living essentially non-conforming anyway. So I don't see that, well, I mean, on lots one and three, right, cuz it's really hard.
Oh, three right there.
Oh, three right there, you're right.
Yeah.
So, you know, and I certainly agree with uh with the applicant that we can make things a whole lot better here over the long run by uh by allowing a zoning change. Like I said, originally I would've said absolutely not, but uh seeing now how this, that, you know, who's living where and how this is all set up, I I don't see a, I don't see a good solution.
It does bother me that although it's not specific to this, that the family that wants to sell the slots have in the past just disregarded building permits and have sort of done as they wished.
Yep.
And so I think that because of that, um I think we should be very careful and and specific about our conditions.
Absolutely.
I agree.
Absolutely.
And can we go over the conditions again that we've discussed?
What we can, what we would probably do is if we made, if we made a motion to approve, then we would discuss, approve with what conditions? And we we talked about the conditions being abandoning the the third house, uh putting conditions about the driveway, easements between um.
The two main houses.
The two main houses, uh making a note about the septic and the well. Those would be the the kinds of of conditions that we would put on, that that we at least discuss putting on.
But the residential use in that small building's abandoned.
Right.
So I I I consider it like sort of building the motion, the person making the motion may not have them all right right off the bat, so then we sort of add on to it, add on to it, here we go.
So I'll I'll do the, against my better judgment, I vote to approve the uh uh the variance with the with the following conditions. The this, what do we call it?
The accessory house.
It's a seat. It's it's what a seat, eighty one seat.
Uh the, what do we wanna call it, uh? What's the best word for that, abandoned as a.
Abandoned as a dwelling.
Abandoned as a dwelling.
By removal of the kitchen.
By removal of the kitchen.
Complete removal of the kitchen.
Yes, exactly, completely removed into the kitchen.
With a building permit.
That's condition number one, condition number two, um we talked about the driveway, um that there would be no access to lot three through lot one or lot two.
From the existing driveway, right?
Okay.
Well, actually, we could just leave it at that, no.
Through, yeah.
Cuz it wouldn't have to be the existing, they could maybe build another one someday.
Right. So no, no access to lot three through lot one or lot two.
That's correct.
And lot two, lot one, I mean, uh will require a separate light, a separate driveway.
That's correct.
Another uh condition would be um the development of a septic and well
On lot two.
In in accordance with the health department regulations.
Border health requirements or something like that, yeah.
On lot two.
Yeah.
Actually, both.
On of the.
Cuz they're gonna have to look at both of them.
Yeah, just in case the other one has to be redone.
Imagine it has to, I mean, who's who's well, I mean, release the septic anyway and um.
Reciprocal uh easement?
That's the that's the other one, a reciprocal easement between lot one, lot two relative to the property line, um your bottom property line.
I think you'd say for a a maintenance easement, just so you know what the purpose was of that place.
Yeah, exactly.
I think that's all I had.
Although reciprocal means both, so I'm sorry, so lot two really doesn't need to go over on lot one's.
To maintain to maintain its driveway along here probably needs it, so I'd say reciprocal maintenance for the driveway and the structure.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Anything we discussed that we're not remembering?
I'm sorry, reciprocal maintenance of driveway and houses easement between lot one and two relative to.
Well, that was was relative to maintenance of.
Oh, okay, relative to maintenance, okay.
When the word reciprocal. Yeah, I don't think we have to address, we don't have to address the uh, we don't have to address the um detached unitary because if they come, if they were to come and get a permit for that, they put the kitchen back and.
It would be a whole different thing.
Yeah, back.
Right, as long as they make it now, um they remove the kitchen down. They remove the kitchen now.
As long as they take it out now with a building permit, or it's documented that was removed.
Understood.
And I wanna make that subject to all of that as well, in other words, I don't want this to be valid until that is removed. Next thing you know, there'll be a renter in there or something.
Right, yes, right, to put subject to on the, uh, the accessory of building.
Anything else that anyone can remember that we discussed? Constance, could you just take a quick scan through your note, make sure that we haven't forgotten any of the things that we thought were important?
I did, well, I wrote down, um, new septic and well on lot two, abandon the second structure on lot one, and driveway configuration, um, those were, but we added a couple more, we added easement. And, um, and then, and then that all, that should we vote for this? That it would all be subject to the abandonment of the dwelling, um, the removal of the kitchen.
I'm, my mind's just going back to the issue of the installation of a driveway on lot one.
One.
Um, and, um, I still wonder if we shouldn't put, uh, with the elevations of the, uh, the elevations of the, of the roadway and where it goes, whether we should address having it at least ten feet, twenty feet from that existing driveway.
Well, I think maybe we just say not to be concurrent with.
Yeah, well, no common driveway.
No common.
Now, did, is that part of the motion?
No, no.
Cause that was, that was some words that we did, that were, was suggested to us.
No common driveway between lot one and two, but no.
That's correct, that's correct, uh, but I also wouldn't wanna see it, you know.
We, we did say it was gonna be a separate driveway.
Right, but I, I personally wouldn't wanna see it like two feet away from, from the other driveway going in there.
But, but Ralph, they, that would have to go through and be approved as well, right?
To put in a driveway?
To put in a driveway, a new driveway, no.
curb cut, who do you have to do the town hall for?
Well, it'd be the highway, highway department.
Yeah, so somebody's gonna have to look at that and say, this isn't safe.
Correct.
Yeah.
Can we put, can we put our preferences to put the, a common driveway in like fifty yards, a feet, whatever it is? I mean, she owns the whole thing, she can sell it with a right of way or an easement using that common driveway in the lot one.
But you're talking about if she were to put that driveway across the bottom there?
Right, just for a section.
Well, the hardship, that's difficult, not hardship, I don't want it to, and by the way, remember, we have to go back and put the hardship on. But anyway, uh, to address that, uh, I think it'd be difficult for us to do that because they have to get permission from the planning board to do that common driveway.
Right.
If, if.
Could we say our preferences? They may have to do that anyway if they decide that's the route they wanna take.
It could be, uh, I suppose.
Or, or it's the matter of fact, the highway department may require that from what we know. Because, because you don't wanna have three cutouts right in the road.
Well, that's what, uh, uh, my concern is that we don't have all these things right, stuck together. But, um, um, I, I guess we could put our preference, but we can't tell, just like the planning board can't tell us that we have to approve this.
Right.
We can't tell them, they have to approve a common driveway, but I suppose we could put wording in there that we prefer to see the driveway serving, uh, lot one, uh, to, um, come off of the, uh, the, uh,
The driveway to serve lot three.
The, uh, future driveway to, to lot one, uh, excuse me, lot three. Uh, we could put that in, but it wouldn't, it, it wouldn't be enforceable, you know?
Might be instead of. No, yeah, you know, I, I appreciate the comment and the desire for recommendations, I just think when you start, these documents that you guys create go to the registry of deeds, and then they get interpreted, whether it's one year from now or ten years from now, by somebody, and I just wouldn't want somebody to, I, I haven't seen many that just say, we prefer this, we would kind of like you to do that. Usually it says, you better do this or you're in trouble.
Right.
And so that's what we try, and then we try to honor it, because you've said it's important, but I think.
But it's not enforceable at all, if we just say prefer, right?
Well, not just that it's not enforceable, it could be confusing to somebody down the road who's saying, what does that really mean? And do we have to do it?
Right.
Can I sell this or not, can I not sell this?
Yeah.
And I think that candidly, the best thing in town hall is you have Ralph here, Ralph will, knows the highway department person if a curb cuts coming, Ralph deals with the planning board, so we will know what your preference is, and I expect that the planning board has probably a similar preference.
And we would, we would have the right to go through the planning board, hearing for common driveway, I think. But those are published hearings for common driveway, right?
Oh, yeah, you, I think everybody gets notified, actually, all the boards get notified.
Anyway.
Okay, and we do need to talk about hardship, uh, in, as a.
In our written decision, we have to refer to what the hardship was.
Yeah, the hardship is, uh, these buildings have been here for.
Eighteen eighty.
Prior, prior to zoning.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they are currently residences and, uh, would be difficult to relocate.
And we said they do have historical value?
And they may have historical value.
They may have historical value.
And they may have historical value.
That's a good idea, gives us one more reason. I appreciate you taking the notes.
Seriously.
Now, would it be too much to ask if you could summarize?
Yes.
Is that what we just said?
Yes.
Just to put summary so that we know what we've got, you know, we'll fix up the justice.
Okay, well, I'm not exactly sure, uh, what the wording is on the exact, um, move, you know, what we've moved. I don't know what that, the first part of that is, other than.
Well, we'll massage it later.
Okay, other than, the only thing I really got down here are the.
Hopefully, we have a recording over there, we hit it twice.
Looks like it, if Barbara's moving on the TV yet, that's always a good sign.
Yeah, so we.
Executive secretary then.
So, vote to approve, um, with the conditions that, one, the AC, the abandoned.
So it's five eighty-one C?
The one C.
Five eighty-one.
Five eighty-one, that's the address.
Oh, oh, oh.
Five eighty-one C.
Five eighty-one C.
So, these buildings are all called for tax purposes, five eighty-one A, five eighty-one B, five eighty-one C.
Eighty-one C.
C.
Yeah?
Yeah.
The abandoned as a dwelling, um, by removal of the kitchen.
Complete, uh, complete removal of the kitchen.
Um, and, and that was something that we wanted.
And that, and that's a precondition.
A precondition, that's a precondition.
Subject to.
Okay, this is a precondition, okay.
Actually, it's probably will all be subject to these conditions, I believe.
Okay, two, that, um, that the driveway, um, that the existing, that the driveway on lot one, is it lot one?
No, you said, you said no access to lot three through lot one or two, you had it in there.
Oh, right, okay, sorry, no access to lot three through lot one or two, you're right, okay.
Yeah, I can read from there.
Well, good, good, I'm glad you can. And then, and then three. Lot requires separate driveway, lot.
Lot.
One. Requires the separate.
Separate driveway.
Driveway one. Fourth condition, um, that the development of a septic and well on both lots, um, under BOH conditions. Must be developed, must be developed, under BOH conditions.
Yeah.
Five, uh, a reciprocal easement between lot one and two relative to maintenance of driveway and houses.
Yeah, yeah, that's it.
Alright, okay.
That's my motion.
I think, I think that's, I think that covers.
Forget about the prefer to see the driveway.
And then we gotta slip in the hardship, uh, in, in that verbiage, uh, right up the top, you know? Before the conditions, we slip in the.
Yeah, well, I've got it here, uh, these buildings have been here prior to zoning, are currently residential and would be very difficult to move. Um, and that also may, they may have historical value.
Right.
That's the hardship.
So, and like I say, I'll, I'll massage that however we need to.
It needs a lot of massage.
Constance won't be able to do it, she's going away.
I can do it on the train, I, I mean, I don't mind doing, I mean, as I'm going because I don't think you can read this.
Well, if you, if you wanna like draft it up, print your notes.
You're writing the whole thing on my works.
Just send it to me and I'll, I'll redo it as I need to. Okay, that's the motion, uh, motion's been made and seconded, uh, no, it hasn't been seconded yet.
It's been seconded now.
Uh, looking for a second for that, on that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, Barbara's right. Okay, uh, any discussion, any further discussion on the motion? If not, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? None, extensions, none, uh, so it's been passed, and, uh, so I, you know, there's a twenty day appeal period, uh, I don't imagine you'll be doing much during that time anyway.
We're getting bids for the driveway.
Okay, so we're, we're good, thank you very much.
Congratulations on your first meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for a world cookie.
Take care, guys, see you later. Hey, have a couple cookies before you go, put some in your pockets, okay? Alright, so now, let me make sure, I think there were some other things, did I get that sheet back? Had the, uh.
Centrist.
There was another, there was another sheet over here that had the, uh.
I gave it to you shortly.
Yeah, I just need to put that back in the, in the trash. And then, uh, let me see here, this here we didn't need, I'll put that back in. I had, I had some working notes here, some, I don't know why I put it back. The agenda, okay, oh.
We already did the next ones, so we don't have to do that.
Right, and then election of officers, okay? Uh, now who is, uh, who has volunteered to be chairperson? No, I can't do that, okay, uh, I mean, I'll do it temporarily, but I'm not gonna do it.
What else, amendments?
What's that, say Ralph would be?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, election of officers, we really, uh, we should at least be trying to get a clerk. We don't have a formal clerk, I believe, right now, so therefore, they're certainly not be signed by secretary clerk. So, uh, you know, and I don't mean secretary alike taking notes of the meetings, that'll be a principal clerk when we get one hired. But just an official clerk, like I'm, I'm the secretary clerk of the, what's the credit, you know, it's part of the board of directors, so it's the same kind of.
I vote for Constance.
I don't, you know, it's like, I don't know if I can take any of these on this.
Well, these are notes, this is under with notes.
Oh.
Oh.
What I'm talking about is not taking notes, uh, it's, it's, it's a formal clerk, you know, clerk of the corporation, or however you wanna describe it. Uh, we have to have a clerk and a vice chairperson, uh, Donna Lambert used to be our clerk. So it was, it was invisible to us because whenever she was needed to sign a document or something, she would just do it, okay? But that's what I'm talking about.
So those are the three things we have to.
Yeah, so I would like to try to see if we can get a clerk sooner than later because, uh.
Well, there's only gonna be five of us for a while, so we get, we better vote on all three.
I mean, it, it's not an owner's position, because like I say, it's only be called upon if there's legal paperwork to sign. Uh, I can't remember.
I can do that.
Yeah, I can't remember, uh, examples of what, what they do, Donna would know better than that, cause I never did it, so.
But I don't have to coordinate meetings.
No, 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 nothing to do with that, it's just a formal, uh, thing to sign for this board. Uh, and most of the things, by the way, are signed by the chair, uh, so, uh, that's it. And I'm vice chair right now, so I can sign in lieu of, of the chairperson, cause I don't have one.
Right, well, I vote for you for vice chair then, if you don't wanna be chair.
Okay, well, yeah, I, I guess you could, uh, do, we could do both of those positions actually then, okay? Uh, vice chair and secretary clerk, so, uh, so, okay, you're making a motion?
I make a motion that Jerry be vice chair.
Okay, let's start with that one, okay, uh, I don't, does a nomination have to be seconded? I don't recall. Well, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, alright, uh, all in favor of that, okay? And objections, extensions, okay, so they voted me as vice chair. Okay, now for the clerk, secretary clerk, secretary clerk.
I vote Constance to be the clerk.
Okay, there's been a motion to nominate Constance G as, uh, secretary clerk, uh, seconded.
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 And that means just coming here to sign things, not.
Just when you're called in to, to do that sort of thing, uh, and if it's different, you can resign, okay?
I don't, yeah, I can't, I can't do this.
No, 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 it's not, it's not this at all, that's why we have a principal clerk, okay? Uh, alright, so all in favor of Constance as secretary clerk?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, objections, extensions. Okay, uh, alright.
That just leaves the chair, and there's only three of us left.
Right.
I need to get a little more experience before I step up to that, so.
Peter, what about you?
What's that?
Chair.
What's that? Oh, I don't wanna be the chair.
But the chair.
I, the, 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 the chair doesn't do motions or whatever.
They can't, they can't, I've since found out that they can.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, yes, yeah, I've been re, reading about it.
Oh, cause I, I've always assumed that the chair doesn't do.
I know, and I did too, but, uh, I, I've been.
Cause that was always my, uh, reason why I would, is, you know, one of us has to be the person.
Well, just like, uh.
At least to get things moving, somebody has to.
I, I was always under the impression.
Why don't I nominate?
I would, Roger.
Oh, I second it.
I don't wanna force a new guy into something.
I will.
But, but let me say this, one of my concerns was the discussion portion, and I'd always been led to believe that the chair doesn't take part in discussions, I've since found out that's not true at all.
Okay.
I've been reviewing a lot of it in Robert's Rules of Order and so forth, uh, and, uh, cause you only use Robert's Rules of Order if the organization adopts Robert's Rules of Order, but in general, uh, it's why they accepted that those are the kind of rules that people go by, and it very clearly says that that is the myth and that it's not correct, that the chair can take part in discussion like anybody else, and they can make motions and, and so forth.
Yeah, I probably wouldn't generally do that anyway.
Right.
Cause the chair really should be just saying, somebody make a motion.
Running the meeting, yeah, uh, but, uh, but I wanna be clear that you can, and you can double check that, look up Robert's Rules of Order. You wanna defer that?
No.
Till the next, uh, meeting, are you willing to deal with it?
Yeah.
Well, I'll play, I'll make a motion as vice chair, Roger.
I'll second.
Okay, that's great.
You wanted to know what packets we received, I've only gotten.
Oh, yeah, okay, uh, okay, so Barbara hasn't gotten any of the three packets, um, I have to work with Jim Hart that on that because he's the one that has the photocopy ability, uh, and, uh, so I've gotta see to it that you get them.
That's fair.
You've got this one, right? Okay, but you don't have that one, Barbara has none.
I don't have any.
You don't have any of the packets for the three ones, okay?
Well, I mean, I, I have one for the one at the point, but that's an old one, right?
No, no, that's not coming out.
I got that on email.
That's like PETA has that also.
I do have that.
Did you say you have that?
I do have that on email, yes.
Okay, that's a really long, it's very.
Well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I must, yeah, oh, yes, I do.
Cause you have it on email, but I prefer to have printed copies for you, so you're working on it. But, you know, rather you having to do it, I'd rather just get the talent to.
Yes.
To, to take care of it, so we need, uh, and that includes the, the one at the point, you have them on email, but you don't have the physical pack.
Only the one at the point, correct, I don't have the other two on email either.
You don't have a physical packet? Roger, do you recall?
I don't have any physical packets.
Okay, well, then we need to get physical packets for all of us then, for those, okay? Because I believe I only have the office file and I write up on that and stuff, so, so I have to get those. The other thing is, I was passing around that thing with the, uh.
Addresses and phone.
Did I get it back, the addresses and so forth?
I don't have it.
Oh, oh, I just stole it, I thought you were, it was for all of us, oh, we were just gonna look and see if it was correct. Oh, oh, I just stole it, I thought, you know, it was for all of us, oh, we were supposed to look and see if it was correct.
I want to put the corrections, then I will go back and correct it, and then I'll get you like a, uh, um, a cardboard copy of it, you know, a little bit more than this, uh, so.
Is that correct?
Am I correct?
The two thousand twenty-three, that's a long appointment.
I guess it is, five years.
Five years.
Is that what it usually is, five years?
Yes, see, it says right here, regular members, five years, associate members, one year.
I was initially an associate member, but I slipped on to the regular member.
Right.
Well, I'll find out.
Yeah.
I'll find out.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah, well, what they had it well.
But I have to, I have to find out anyway, because if, if you're, uh, if you're worse one in as a one year, and you're willing to go to the other, then we have to get the selectmen to, which I'd love to do. Uh, I really like to get five years.
Well, then that wouldn't be correct as far as my, my exploration.
That's why I'm asking you, uh.
Do you know what yours is?
Yours was what?
It's, it was within this year.
Oh, yeah, you, you may have picked the Gary's.
Yes.
Gary's or, um, or Chris's.
But I thought what it came, it came up again.
You're, you're, you're filling, you're filling the unexpired one.
No, it came up again.
I'm eighteen. You expired nineteen, June thirtieth.
You don't, but you're.
We both, we both.
But I, okay, I.
We both volunteered and they gave you his.
Oh, that's, okay, yes, oh, my God, it was so long ago.
Mine expires in June, so it's like.
Right, yeah, that's how it works, and then if you do renew, then, then, uh, then it would be the five years.
Okay.
It was Donna that sloughed open, that's the permanent one.
Because there was some confusion on yours, Peter, if I recall it, uh, but, but you're, but you are correct, you are now on a five year, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
No, it's not five, it's, I'm, I'm done June.
Well, yeah, well, that's, but, but you're one of the regular members, okay?
Right, one of the regular members.
And if you were to renew, it would be on a five year, or you could say, well, no, I don't want to do that, I want to just be associate for one year at a time. Okay, so I want to just make sure that these look okay to everyone, all right? And, uh, okay, is this a cell, Roger?
Yeah.
Okay, can you, uh, do you typically get texts on the cells? I mean, can you, you, you can, and you don't mind getting text? Because that's one of the things too, that.
I don't live with my phone though, so.
No, okay, well, that's same with me, for a long time, I didn't even use my cell.
I'm one of the few people that my home phone, you leave a message, I get it on my home phone, because my other phone, I don't, I'm not, you know, the typical, you know, you know.
Right.
Living by my phone.
I guess I'm typical.
That's five, five four, five oh?
Yeah.
Four, five oh, okay, uh, because only sometime at a more of a last minute kind of thing, if I had to get in touch with you and you're not, you don't look at your email maybe once a day or once every other day, uh, I, I would maybe try to do it as a quick text, but I don't want to make a phone call because I don't want to bother you.
Right, yeah, and on the other hand, I look at my emails probably fifteen times a day.
Okay, see, so you're, you're.
Because I have work and I have other things, so I'm constantly looking at emails.
So, you know, I might even make a note on that email preferred, something like that.
Well, if you want to get it home, be quick, that's probably, well, other than the home phone.
Yeah, okay, uh, all right, not a problem, so anything else that, you folks, I appreciate, by the way, you taking the vote tonight, getting that taken care of, uh, and, uh, and now we've set these meeting times, I've got to do the advertising in the shorelines, I've got to, uh, write up the, the notices like this, one is the meeting agenda, the other for each meeting, and then the, uh, the actual butter notice for each, uh, hearing separately, and we have to send those separately, and Diane was really, really good for us, I'll tell you, before she left, even though she wasn't employed by us since October, she, uh, did up all the, uh, butters labels and, and envelopes, I got the envelopes ready, I just have to put all the stamps on them, uh, and so forth, so, uh, so she did a tremendous amount for us, and that's another thing too, I don't know, um, if you want to, um, send her a note of thanks or anything for all of her work with us, either, either jointly or separately. I, I intend to try to get a little token fruit basket or something for her, uh, and if you want to participate.
Yeah, yeah.
What's that?
Can't be over fifty dollars.
Can't be over what?
Fifty dollars.
No, it would be, it would be just under that. I actually brought her one, I had brought her one, uh, from the board, um, when she was out.
Oh, right, right, that's right.
So I'd like to do something like that.
Yeah.
So anyway, um, and do you want to, uh, you want to do that as a joint thank you, or do you want to do individual thank yous?
Sure.
Joint thank you?
Yep.
Congrats on your election as town clerk.
Yeah, which I don't know when it takes place, actually, when is their election?
Next week.
Next week, just like ours?
Just like yours.
Yeah, we, we vote next week. I was very disappointed that there were, there were really no publicized candidates, uh, meetings that I know of. I asked the candidates today, I went to the, well, you were there, Constance, uh, went to the one at the council on aging, but even that one was not widely advertised, it was just within the council on aging, and you had to sign up if you even going, if you're attending, you had to register for it.
Is Donna gonna apply for clerk?
Uh, Donna has applied for the clerk and, and, and I should give you an update on that. We've got a number of applications for that in three different phases, uh, and we keep saying, well, we're gonna be able to get it, we're gonna be able to do the interviews, and something else gets in the way and we don't get to do it, uh, so we, uh, we, when I say we, I've got Jim Hotnet, Roger and myself, have been, uh, trying to get this done, uh, but, uh, anyway, we've got to, uh, get a grip on it and, and do it.
So we have several applicants.
We have a number of applicants, but, but there's a reason why it falls through the cracks, because whenever I get to call the people, they can't do a day, and I, they've got a full-time job, they thought this was just taking minutes at night.
Or, or it was gonna be a full-time job.
Right, somebody else wanted a full-time job, somebody else wanted only a part-time job, but, uh, it had, had to add to their, um, their longevity retirement time, well, this job doesn't.
Right.
Because they're not a, a regular town employee, uh, they're town employee but not a regular town employee, so there's been issues with everyone that, that I've contacted, so I'm still working on trying to get that done, uh.
And who is responsible actually for making the hire?
Uh, the board of selector.
And, and who's responsible for making the recommendation as to whom they should hire?
Well, I guess technically speaking, I would say the town administrator, but he has subcontracted that to us, which is good in a way, and not so good in a way, uh, I mean, good in a way that we have an opportunity to explain better than probably they could.
Yeah, how we work.
What, what the requirements are, so, there's a job description, but it doesn't really tell you, you know, you gotta be here this, you gotta do all these, blah, blah, blah. So, from that point of view, it's, um, it's, it's an advantage for us, uh, from the point of view of us trying to get it done, it's a disadvantage, if we could say, but they've got their own set of problems because, you know, Denise is working under, under, uh, heavy, uh, strains and, uh, and now without Diane, uh, as of this week, uh, they're gonna be even worse, so, uh, so we're gonna keep trying to get a clerk, believe me, nobody wants it more than I do, because I, I'd love to get out from underneath all of that, but, but, uh, it's taken hours and hours of my time.
We'll have one by the next time we meet.
Uh, by, um, April twenty-fifth, right?
No, me, first.
Any second is our, is our first one, okay, uh, well, I'd like to say hopefully.
Likely not.
Or at least a plan to have one, put it that way.
You know, certainly down selected.
But, uh, yeah, uh, we are working on it, believe me, okay?
Yeah.
So, do the best we can, so, all right, um, any other items to come before us?
I'll write this up as best I can on the train and, um, and email it to you tomorrow.
Yeah, you'll just send it to me electronically, okay, that's great. Don't be too fussy about it, as long as I, I can figure out the notes with my memory of what happened, I can figure it out and I'll just massage it.
Well, do you want these, or do you want me to try to do that?
No, uh, I, I, if you could do what you said, that would be even better, because then it's already electronically in my computer and I don't have to sit and type everything all up again, if it's not a burden for you, okay? Otherwise, I would do it.
I like it.
Uh, make the motion to close the meeting.
Uh, to, motion to adjourn, okay, uh, second?
Second.
Okay, uh, could you do me a favor and put the time, uh, because I'll have to put that in the minutes after, put the time of the adjournment, okay?
Okay.
Uh, okay, and, uh, and the same thing with the time when we started the, the hearing, which is about five after, five after seven, okay? All right, uh, motion to adjourn, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, objections, no, uh, abstentions, no, thank you very much.